Ready? Like to call a regular village trustees meeting to order?
Any changes, consideration, additions or removals to the agenda?
Yep, I would like to. We can add for, right, we'll call it. Five A, first thing, discussion regarding the Ludlow Village farmers market, Ludlow Farmers Market. Do that first, so we have people here to discuss that and then they don't have to wait around.
Two minutes from previous meetings, February sixth, twenty twenty four, regular meeting, and February twenty second, twenty twenty four, special meeting.
I'd like to make a motion to approve both February sixth, twenty twenty four, regular meeting and February twenty second, twenty twenty four, special meeting, and it's as provided.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Comments from citizens? Seeing none. Allocation review and possible approved, Ato Brew request at rate reduction due to flood.
So you have in front of you Diane worked on, we had the request at the last meeting for Ato Brew and Mr. Darcy's, which is Route one oh three, yeah, Mr. Darcy's Route one oh three South, requesting rate reduction because of the events from the July flood. You see the cost breakdown regarding the base charge, consumption cost, because Mr. Darcy's has paid in full. Ato Brew has been paid for last quarter, or excuse me, from January, July first, twenty twenty three, through the thirty first of last year, December, and this billing period, the first of January through the thirtieth of June, has not been paid as of yet. They're requesting the rate reduction because of they were out of business. They are coming back into business. So this was tabled at the last meeting because essentially we were looking for some more info on the process. This is something that the board, to my knowledge and research, has never been done. They have, you know, they were out of business, they're coming back to business. There's never been a situation where we refunded or did a rate reduction for a business or property that was not operable. I can tell you what the water commissioners did is they did, they decided to not approve these in the sheer fact of not that, again, sympathetic to the situation, but it's, this is, it puts us, the boards, in a situation where there's a precedent that could be set. And they opted to look for future, future events for a model from other towns or the League of Cities to provide guidance for a breakdown in a process for doing something like this. Because right now, this is a little, as I say, feeling where if we have a business that was to, say, our house was damaged because of a fire, a flood, et cetera, they would come to the board within a specific timeframe. You notice from here in one of these, Darcy's, for this billing period, the water is zero consumption because they asked to have that turned off. Is that a piece of that model that says, okay, you came, you requested the water to be shut off? You know, essentially, there's nothing that the town is doing to prohibit these businesses from opening. They do have those allocations. Again, I am completely sympathetic and not against doing these for businesses. I just don't want to open the boards up to setting a difficult precedent where there's no specific model that allows us to do this rather than just say, yes, it looks good. So that's what the, that's what the water commissioners did earlier this evening. But we're, again, open fully for discussion.
I feel like if we're worried about setting precedent, then we should understand what's happened here and draft something to prevent that from happening in the future.
Absolutely, one hundred percent.
So with that being said, I am sympathetic to these guys. Neither business has been open. I don't imagine they have been using water, so.
And the consumption is based off of, not necessarily what they consume, but their consumption charge is based off the capacity.
Yes, so, and if they, if we move forward with this, would they have to re-apply for their allocation?
To, no, I mean, this is really, if you were not approving?
If we were to approve it, and abate them, would they, would they have to come back and do any other allocations?
It's still there. Is there, is there a precedent set in terms of a private home? What do we have?
No.
Circumstances or?
No, I mean, there would be, there, I think there are situations where if someone was, have we, you know, I mean, we've done this for the Timber Inn, we did it for Sam's, where they said, well, as of July first, we want, you know, we want our bill from July first through now abated, but that was because they weren't opening again.
I think that Ato Brew's, I'm gonna use them as an example, is in a unique situation because they don't own the building and they're not in control of those permitting processes, so they can't come to us and say, hey, turn off our water, we're not gonna need it because we're this far out. It wasn't really up to them.
Yeah, I don't, I'm not sure if they're, are they private, you know, if they're just required for their connection.
I'm not afraid of setting a precedence because I think along with this job, through the legal stuff that we're bound over, over governed, I think at points in time, we should show a little heart compassion for fellow man under circumstances which were totally out of their control.
And as I said at the water commissioners meeting, the, the amount, not to the, to the company, to the businesses, but to the town, the amount is negligible. It's not about the, you know, it's just making sure that everybody's on the, and I agree with you all, you know, it's, there's a time where things need to be, you know, sympathetic to the, so realistically, it would be, you know, you could opt to, I guess, credit them, both of them are paid, I don't know if you would like to, you know, refund them or if that's the way you wanna go. But that.
Well, we're doing these one at a time, correct?
Yeah.
Ato Brew and Mr. Darcy's are separate.
They are planning on reopening?
They are.
They are.
Mr. Darcy's is currently up for sale. I believe there are some other outstanding matters with that building, but not pursuant to the town.
So, go ahead, Mr. Grant, sorry.
No, I was just thinking about that.
So from July first, twenty twenty three, to December thirty first, Ato Brew paid in full this number.
Correct.
Now they're looking to, we're looking to collect payment for January first to June thirtieth. They paid in full and they weren't open at all. I mean, barring a couple days in early July. I don't know what sort of credit we want to explore, but I, I would feel that, I'm offering them a rate reduction for January first to June thirtieth this year is, I would entertain that.
And to the provision, what if they're back in business before June, and it goes back to the original rate charge?
You were, so with this, you're only, because you're, you would be looking at, they're willing to pay the base charge for, for the water, or wastewater, excuse me, so you are looking at, what is that, consumption charge, so you're just looking at a charge of a hundred and fifty-four dollars and forty-two cents, so that's, you know, just the difference of five hundred dollars.
Five hundred dollars.
Let's say if you were, because if you're gonna pay, so, yeah, you're basically, you're scrubbing seven hundred and fourteen dollars.
You made that a motion, right?
I did not make a motion yet. I'm sorry, I'm confused. They wanna pay the base rate?
Yes.
Not anything else, so it's a fourteen minus one.
Well, no, excuse me, so it'd just be the, I was just talking a lot, so they would just be responsible for the base charge of one fifty-four forty-two, and that would be, you basically relinquish the seven fourteen, the consumption charge.
Okay.
Then this is Mr. Darcy's, we're talking.
We're talking about Ato Brew. I would like to make a motion on section five A regarding Ato Brew. I would like to make a motion to forgive the seven hundred and fourteen dollar wastewater consumption charge for billing period of January first of this year to June thirtieth of this year, with the caveat of if they opened sooner, that the wastewater would kick in from that day forward. I would also like to request a credit in the amount of seven hundred and fourteen dollars for the billing period of July first, twenty twenty three, to December thirty first, twenty twenty three.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Now on to Mr. Darcy.
So same situation, except these are both, Mr. Darcy's has been paid in full, so very similar cer- situation, trying to reopen.
The only difference is they're trying to sell.
They are trying to sell, yep.
Which does have a different bearing for me, if you're trying to sell the property. So. I would like to make a motion of applying a credit to the account listed as Mr. Darcy's Route one oh three South, in the amount of five hundred and seventy-one dollars and twenty cents, for the billing period of July first, twenty twenty three, to December thirty first, twenty twenty three. And I would like to keep the billing the exact same for.
Excuse me, you, the eight twenty-one thirteen, is that? We're, oh, oh, it's five tw- okay, sorry.
Five seventy-one twenty.
Okay, got it.
So I would like to apply a credit to the account of five seventy-one and twenty cents for the billing period of July first, twenty twenty three, to December thirty first, twenty twenty three, and I would keep the billing period this unchanged, meaning no credit or refund for this current billing period.
Second.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
So we will discuss the village farmers market.
Three, two, week or two ago, I had met with Emma Wright regarding kind of revitalizing the farmers market here in Ludlow and some of the ideas that she was bringing forward to help do this, which seemed to be a wonderful idea, and I know she's here. So I am in the interest of continuing to talk. I will turn it over to Emma and kind of, if you wanna give us a explanation of what you're thinking. I emailed you, you guys have the letter, but you have the email too, so that was forwarded to you, so you kind of arrived, but Emma will tell you.
Thank you very much, I appreciate you all hearing us. So in addition to myself, here I have Leslie Son, who's our vice president of the board. I'm acting president as well as the marketing manager going forward. We have Greg Cox, who is another one of our board members, and joining via Zoom is Abby Childs, who is our secretary and our marketing coordinator. We are just a few of a team of seven on our new board. And the Ludlow Farmers Market, as you might know, was going to go under after fifteen years. The space was difficult to use at OMS after COVID and floods. It was just difficult for the previous board members to continue, they had other businesses to run, and once we kind of heard they were closing down, we got a team together and stepped up and said, hey, I think that we can take this over and have it back. There's been nothing but positive support for this project, it's actually been a really beautiful experience. But what we'd like to do is explore some other options for the farmers market. The previous space on the OMS lawn served well for a long time. There's logistical errors, mainly parking, also a grassy lawn got pretty wet last year, so we're just exploring what things could look like going forward, and we'd love to use your Friday art on Depot Street. We'd like to move the market to a Sunday morning and close down Depot Street between Main and Pleasant to have a walking market through the center of town. Not only would it be visible to people coming through, vacationers are still here on Sunday, but a lot of people in the community noted to us that it was challenging to come to the market on a Friday evening, there's a concert series going on at Jackson Gore, we are working with school zone times and restaurants opening, you know? There were some things that were working against us, and we wanna work alongside of our challenges instead. So not only would the Sunday morning market right here in town help support our vendors in that respect, but it's also going to drive that foot traffic right back into local businesses and vice versa. A lot of these storefronts really have nothing to gain except for customers and acknowledgement. So we've talked to some of the store owners here on Depot Street, they're in support. We wanna work with them directly to highlight them too and just say thank you for being here for us and make the farmers market a really symbiotic relationship with the town rather than something that's gonna get in the way of everybody. And then also, we would like to move it to the morning on Sunday from nine AM to one PM. We're still gonna catch those people who are here looking for those good, they want goodies, and hopefully extend all the wonderful things our vendors can provide to the community as well.
I have a question for you, Ms. Wright. Do you have a letter of the businesses that have said that they're okay with losing parking spots potentially, or whatever the case may be?
I don't have a letter specifically, but I'm happy to get one. Most of those businesses aren't open on Sunday mornings regardless. The Silver Spoon Gallery is really the big one that we wanna talk to, but Steve is in support and I can absolutely pursue a letter from him.
Have you spoken to the Hatchery folks?
I have heard back from email and they're supporting, they are in support right now.
My one question that I had in addition to that question was, closing down the street, if it starts at nine AM, it poses a time that would be, I think, tough, because do we close down the street before, so the night before? Do we close it down earlier in the morning, but then jeopardize people not being able to leave? Do you have a, is nine to one set in stone, or can it be more fluid?
It can absolutely be fluid, that's the time we'd like the market to be open. We only propose the street closure from eight AM to two PM. I've worked in farmers markets before, Greg here helps run a very successful market in Rutland. We really only need that hour window for vendors to pull around, unload, come back. So it absolutely wouldn't need to be the evening before, we just anticipate that hour buffer between the opening and closing hours, but we are flexible on that time if there are constraints with the town.
Excuse me. We, our chief of police, who is also head of our traffic control, isn't here. Mr. McNamara, would you relay what his thoughts were?
Yeah, so, I mean, chief, I think his big concerns are when the street becomes closed. I know with parking, you know, obviously, how are they going to patrol, parking in the morning, and removal of vehicles. I think that's really the, the big ones that he, I know for the chili cook-off, that's closed, but it is closed at night. I believe they, they close that street at night, at ten thirty, eleven o'clock, which really removes any of the vehicles from, you know, blocking the street there.
I'm personally, as a member of the community and as a member of this board, in extreme favor of it. I wanna make Ludlow more pedestrian friendly, and I think this is a great way to do that. Logistically, I wanted to work with our traffic control department and our local police. So, you know, we're probably looking to do a motion, because it seems as though, are we treating these as two separate issues, the March twentieth closure fundraiser and moving in the future? Well, I'd like to make a motion for the March twentieth from three to ten, and I would like to make a motion that we approve the closure of Depot Street between Main Street and Pleasant Street from three PM to ten PM on Wednesday, March twentieth. And that would includes, include your hour time.
That was, the event we only plan to run from five to seven on the twentieth, so that three to ten would be, you know, loading in, loading out, et cetera.
That's my motion.
Nice, okay. I'll second that for discussion purposes, I have a couple of questions myself. Would you have permission to answer? Okay, is this just for the one time, the one date?
I, so, we have two separate motions we'd like to propose, there's the March twentieth fundraiser, which would be in the evening, and then the market, we are proposing Sunday mornings recurring, starting Memorial Day weekend, up to Indigenous Peoples' Day weekend.
Okay, so the hours would be basically the same as they were at OMS?
No, they would move from, the street, full street closure would be from eight AM to two PM on Sunday morning. OMS was four to seven.
Let me rephrase that, the time period would be from May to?
Oh, I see, yes.
I'm sorry.
Correct.
May to?
We didn't explain it.
May to October.
Do you realize that most of those vendors have tents that were anchored at OMS? What's your solution to the issue?
You actually can purchase tent weights that are specific to those types of tents, they slide right around, and we are going to require a certain weight to be on each peg of the tents. I've been in enough storms to know it's a hazard, and we wanna require that at each vendor.
Okay, and also, there were several vendors that needed their vehicle to be close to their stand for logistical reasons with what they're selling.
Sure.
Are that, is that gonna be allowed?
We, we don't, we would like to not allow vehicles to be parked within the street alongside tents, just for space issues. What we'd like to propose is that hour window before the market begins, people can load in with their vehicles, unload everything they need to, and go park in a separate location. We'd love to ask Shaw's if we can dedicate twenty to thirty of their spaces in their parking lot for our vendors alone, that way the public's not taking it up, but the vendors have a secure place to go every single weekend. And that system has worked beautifully for myself in the past, and Greg, I think that that system works pretty well for you guys at Rutland, having a drop-off.
Yeah, in Rutland, we, the police department closes the street down in the morning, we close off an access into the shopping center and also one of the streets in, in Rutland itself, by the bank. It works really well. One of the things that farmers markets can bring, I think you pointed it out, Justin, is foot traffic. And I've started several farmers markets, the multiplier numbers are pretty impressive, every dollar spent at a farmer's market, local food generates two point six dollars in economic activity. It's, it's a magnet and it gets people out of their cars, creates foot traffic. Occasionally, we do have an issue with, there's a car that didn't get moved out, it happens. Well, I guess that car is there for the day. And.
Probably only happened once.
Exactly. But, you know, you, you deal with it. And it, it, it has really helped a lot in Rutland, when we've taken a three hundred and fifty thousand, when we were small, and this community is absolutely right, you don't even have a grocery store at this point. We've taken a three hundred and fifty thousand sales market and we brought it up to a two point one million dollar sales, annual sales, in about ten years. And I, I see Ludlow as having the capacity. We don't, you don't have a population in our community down here, but you certainly have the, you know, the vacationers, the secondary homeowners, a lot of traffic coming through, and I think every business down here. Having the market out where it was, the community doesn't, wouldn't benefit as much, but having it downtown is absolutely great. It's a little, closing a street can be a little problematic, but I think the value of far outweighs, you know, any cause.
Yeah, I think the condition of the available slot could be a personal decision by the vendor. I have no objections and good luck.
I, I have, you, you said you had X, I don't remember the number, but quite a few vendors signed up, and you feel there's plenty of room on, on Depot Street to do that?
We do, yes, we can use both sides of the street, which only takes up so much space, and we have the capacity to fit thirty, potentially thirty-plus people on that section alone.
We were hoping to use the little park too for music?
Yes.
That is something that we could use on.
I would say you realize KESMA Park as much as possible.
Yeah.
And you feel there's plenty of parking on the street or across the street? The municipal lot?
We, we would really like to direct people to park in a municipal lot if possible, to have the appropriate signage to say farmer's market parking over here, because there is still plenty of street parking as well, but for people that aren't as familiar with the town, to be able to direct them and say, here's, here's a place you could go.
We'd like to sit down with Jeff.
I think that that's, I mean, I, I think it's great. I think that for the, the location, you know, probably the best street we have in town, it's right in the center of town, I think it's ideal, but the caveat is that, you know, Jeff knows how this works.
Oh, yeah.
So looping him in and we just making sure it will be a learning process and, you know, process through, you know, learning as we go, and as long as that communication is open, I don't see it being a problem. It's not something that we haven't done and that we don't do, you know, with the chili cook-off, it's, it's not, you know, we're not reinventing the wheel there. But I think just making sure that Jeff is the main point of contact, you know, and our officers know what's going on, we can loop, we'll loop our Stephanie Grover, who's our ambulance chief in, because obviously Influx is gonna wanna have EMS in the area. That's not a problem, but, yeah, just having those conversations is, is key, but I, I mean personally, I think it's, it would be advantageous in town, I can see it not being.
So the motion I made was just for March twentieth?
Right now, we're voting for the fundraiser on March twentieth, so. Any more discussion?
I guess I second the kind of.
Yeah, all in favor?
Aye.
That was just for the fundraiser.
Just for the fundraiser.
Um, now in regards to the recurring from May to October, I, I'm in favor of it. I, I'd like to chat with Jeff.
I, I think it, I would ask the board to, you know, let's, aside from making a motion, but I think it's, it sounds like a great idea to go, but I would have a contingent upon that we can meet with Jeff next week.
Absolutely.
And we'll do it, because, again, I'm not gonna, he may say something that, and I doubt he will, that is, you know, a complete non-starter. I just, I don't, he knows, he's been doing it for thirty something years, so I just wanna make sure that everybody's looped in, everything's checked off, if we have to call a special meeting to, to do this, to approve it, we can, or.
Cause you asked about the business.
Yeah.
Signed off, I, I'd like to have myself, just a few of those loose ends tied on before we say, I don't, I don't have a problem, but we do have to work with.
Just wanna check those boxes.
Yeah.
Now.
Get the boxes checked.
Do you think? I'm gonna make a motion. I'm gonna keep you right on this one. I'd like to make a motion to approve the farmers market on Depot Street every Sunday between May and October, contingent upon two things. The final meeting and approval of the chief and a submitter, a submission of letters of approval from the local businesses that are affected. And I think that would, that would be my motion.
Second.
Okay, any more discussion? I, I would like to just say, I think we could do that, get, get those done, and then.
And then come back and.
Come back and vote. I just, I don't wanna put the parrot before the horse. I'd like, I'd like.
We're running low on time, aren't we? Are we running low on time?
Oh, a little bit. We we have vendors that need to commit to other.
We have a question.
Other markets, et cetera, so we we are tight on time. We've been, we need to promise people and answer as to where the market is going to be held.
We have our vi- our annual village meeting on March twenty sixth. That could be, we could reassess this thing.
Okay, that's yeah, that's reasonable.
That gives us a couple of weeks to uh get those in the rounds.
And then, and then we can have all of. All the sense.
Yeah. And and I'm all in favor of having those, those particular loose ends tied up, just to make sure that we're.
And I think that we um. We can communicate. I'll talk to Jeff tomorrow. And he's, um, I know he's off for the rest of the week, so maybe if we shoot for early next week. I mean, that's really the the big one. I don't anticipate any real issues there, so, but even if we. Kind of check that off the box, if you have vendors that are hedging one way or the other, that might be a reassuring fact, let's say it's just. That's the big one that you could reassure them that like, this is probably going to happen. Um, it's just, we gotta wait for the next meeting, so if they had to make a decision.
Sure.
Before an official decision was made, that might give them a little more time too.
Okay.
But I'll set that up for next week.
I appreciate that, thank you.
And we all can be involved in that and and I'll talk to Jeff.
We can do it here.
Okay, great.
Great.
Do you have a question?
Abby Jones actually has her hand up.
Okay, go ahead, Abby.
Hi, thank you. Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Very well.
Great. Thank you so much for bringing this to the table today. Um, it's really great to hear you are all really excited about this. Um, I just had one question about the contingency about getting approval from the local businesses. While I don't have any issues with any businesses being on board, because like Emma mentioned, it's definitely gonna be a positive for them. Um, is is there something that we wanna put like a, a more kind of um. I don't know, a direct rule on this? Like if we have one business that says no, but everybody else says yes, does that kibosh the whole thing or what are your thoughts on that?
I wouldn't say that one business has more sway than any other business, so if it was over fifty percent positive, it would stand to reason that. That would pass for me.
And I really, the businesses are gonna get more, more traffics with this. Uh, so I I don't see him. Not being ha- not being happy with it. I think the main thing is Jeff and the.
Yeah, and we.
Closing the street.
And as the, as Mr. Brand said, you know, we don't wanna just approve something and then have neighbors say, hey, what the heck, like. We didn't know this was happening or anything like that, so. Being a small town, I wanna make sure everybody's, you know, at least aware of it and hopefully everybody's on board with it.
Okay, great. Thank you all so much. We really, really appreciate it.
Of course.
And in the conversations in the meantime, if you have that with the businesses and they have any questions, just send them to me. And I can help guide them through the process of what it's looking like for the towns, you know, if they have any municipal related questions, just send them my way, that's fine.
Sure.
So, I would like to resend.
Motion, what are we gonna do?
I think I'm gonna resend the motion.
In that case, I'll resend myself.
We're gonna make the right.
I haven't found it yet.
Going along the path.
So that will, that will give you plenty of time and we can get it all worked out.
Wonderful, thanks.
And that still gives you time to let the vendors know.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you very much for considering that as well.
I'm so excited to have a farmer's market.
We are too, yeah. Thank you so much.
It's gonna be great.
Yeah.
Thanks for coming down here.
And you have to come to the fundraiser, of course.
Sounds great.
Okay, departmentary reports.
Is this where we step out?
Yeah, of course.
You can stay for the exciting stuff.
I don't have any questions about the departmentary reports.
Plan, plan still.
Plan's still going.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So no questions. Age receivable. So, um, moving in the right direction with uh age receivables. Um, still, you know, over a hundred and twenty days, we have the still nineteen thousand that is outstanding working. Some of those are applied to payment plans since our last meeting. So it has. We are progressing, but um slowly, I think we're down about almost ten thousand dollars from our last meeting, if that's right.
If memory serves, when you first brought these to us a few months ago, it was at forty four thousand.
Yeah, so so we're down, we're 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 moving in the right direction. It's, you know. This one's more of a, sometimes it's more of a marathon than a sprint. But we're we're doing our due diligence and collecting, so that's, and again, the wastewater is difficult because you can't turn it off. So it's um, but we're doing our right job.
Good, thank you for uh keeping us on that. Okay, other business. Um, was there supposed to be uh something with those village bylaws or zoning today?
No, so we're going to the the P C, that's going to be potentially in April, the April meeting.
Okay.
Because that's going to be a public hearing, that needs to be warned as a public hearing.
Got it.
So that would be the first.
Yeah, first of any one.
Okay, any other new business? Municipal manager updates?
Um, just briefly, you know, the um. We are, I'll give you this, you know, from the wastewater standpoint, wastewater plant, we are in um. Still the throes of the the rebuilt FEMA process right now. I think at this point, I could give a tour of that plant with my eyes closed. Um, but that's, that's all right. So where we stand right now is. I don't know how much we we expounded upon it last time, but there is. There's always a process with with FEMA, with a with a plant like ours. Um, so Johnson and Hardwick were also the two plants that were very, very hard, hard. They are, those two places are seriously considering relocating their plant. Not, at first, did not seem like an option for us. Um, it's kind of come to light a little bit that there is a possibility with. Um, the name escapes me now, but the corporation that owns the land behind. Immerse or.
Mount, oh, I'll get the name, sorry.
It's this Black River.
Macris or something, yeah, change.
No, it's, it's not the Tout Mine.
Oh, no.
It's Black River Development Corporation. Don't quote me on that, but they own the land that is behind, there's a parcel that is behind.
In between the valleys?
Yeah, it's behind the valleys and gentlemen, it's out behind, there's a five hundred foot right away that goes out that way. It, you know, they have interest in developing that as whatever, you know, it's been there for years. It's a twenty seven acre parcel, ten of its uh developed. And this is pie in the sky stuff, but um, you know, if it was something like an industrial park, possibly. Our plant could be housed on part of that tower of the flood. Um, so.
How would you get the pipes up there?
You pump it up from where it is.
So you'd install new pumps?
Yeah, so this is where the the, you know, the. Projections have changed a little bit because FEMA wants three things from us from the wastewater plant. They want what it costs to put it back to what it was pre-disaster, period. That's the first one. Second one they want is what it's going to cost to put it back in flood.
Resilient.
Flood resilient state, which could be buildings six feet high in the air. Those were our two options. Now, the third option, now that this has been, and the reason we're investigating is it kinda came up. And I don't want us to be in the position in ten years or whatever they that, you know, like, why didn't you think about this when it happened? Like, again, this, the chances of this happening at, right now, are probably not that great. But we need to investigate it because the, what we have to sell and work with FEMA is that, okay, if it's gonna cost us twelve million dollars. Or we'll call it twelve billion to put it back flood resilience, but it costs us thirty to relocate it. Where are we at this dance? So if it floods again and it's another twelve, now we're at twenty four versus thirty, so. You know, we gotta fit, we have to figure out what what, where that is. So that's kind of that ball now that we're into the spring, so we're kind of behind. I had a meeting with FEMA, State of Vermont. You know, all the, I guess, proverbial heavy hitters um last week and. You know, we're kind of a little bit further behind some of the other towns because, as I told them, I said. When this flood happened, you know, these other towns were just like, okay, we can start the process of. What our rebuild looks like, et cetera, et cetera. Our main focus was, oh no, we have twenty thousand people coming here in. Three months, like, what are we going to do to get this functional? So the the further scope wasn't looked at for us, so it was kind of a flip. For us, now we're looking at big scope rebuild kind of thing. So that's, that's kind of where we are with that, you know, the plan is. It is functioning at a hundred percent. We're, we're in a good place, but it does look like a bomb went off down there and now we're starting. Everything is temporary. So. Will we have a relocation? Probably not. Um, but it's something that we're gonna have to take a long hard look at.
I'll be honest with you, I don't want that place to get damaged ever again. Obviously, I don't want that, but we are surrounded by mountains on a town along a river. And we have to have access to be able to dredge these rivers, increase the riverbanks, or manipulate it in any way that we see fit as a town without the state interference. And I'm fully on board to explore anything, and I'm fully on board to talk about relocating the plants and putting in pumps and all that. Um, but we have to have state assistance and federal assistance to do these things.
Oh, and all it comes down to the bottom line is, okay, great, but where's the, where's the thirty million?
Exactly.
You know, I mean, and I think at some point. If. You know, if, all we can do is our due diligence to investigate it, so, you know, if. If and when, unfortunately, we put it back and it floods again. Well, FEMA wouldn't let us, you know, I'm I'm sorry, you know.
Unfortunately, there is not an if it floods again, there's when it's gonna flood again.
And the, and the, and what may be in our favor in terms of relocation there is the fact that, you know. We're not in a flood plain, we're in the floodway. So, so the, the, the specs to have that. Well, there's so many layers to the FEMA piece and the State of Vermont gets involved in rebuilding and it's just.
Well, we adopt the bylaws here at town level too.
It's a nightmare to try and say like, I mean. Cause at some point, you're like, all right, so we're gonna, to put it back where it is, we have to elevate the control building, like. Are we gonna need to get Joe and uh elevator to get to his office, you know, in the morning because he's gotta go up so high? Like, at what point do you say like, this just doesn't make sense? Um, but you have to be near a river to discharge and it's just, it's a, it's a, it's a process, but.
We don't need to elevate, we need to ditch. We need to take those streams. There isn't any dredging that we can do that's gonna violate. The uh quality of that river any worse than that flood did. And each one, and take it from a guy who's been here for eighty years and watches this stuff. Each one has gotten consistently worse and it's gone out, the base of the rivers are gone up. And they got wider and shallower. And that's what you saw last July.
And you can see, if you stand on the Pleasant Street Extension Bridge and look south, you'll see now that there is a, like a land, a channel. That has, so there's a, basically now an island that is created on the the left-hand side of the river. That the water has split, so now it's, it's, it's getting worse, that is in. So it's, it's a difficult situation because that bridge too is a choke point. Once that gets piled up, it's going one way and it's right at that point.
There's still a lot of stuff under that bridge.
Correct, yeah, and you know, they've talked about, I don't know what effect, Timber Inn closes on the twelfth of this month. Closes, has to be demolished in ninety days. So what that does to that flip, I I don't know, but it's something that will.
Damn it up.
So, but that's, so that's really the big, um, you know, other than that, business as usual and and the village. We finalized the plans for paving in twenty twenty five for the village portion of one oh three. So that'll take, that'll take place next year, hopefully. Um, looking at the relocation, you know, eliminating the parking spots in front of Dunkin' Donuts, that's the big one, those are going. Um, probably relocating a number of the fire hydrants from in the road and sidewalks to the other side of the sidewalk, so they're out of the right of way. Um, where they should be, we had a car.
That's a big one.
We had a car hang up on one by O M S this winter already. Thankfully, it didn't break off because we gotta have a hell of a mess.
Right.
Um, so those are the big ones right now, but other than that, we're, I think we're pretty good.
Is there, I know that bridges are um town and state for the most part, not village. But is there any plans for the V Trans looking at the Depot Street Bridge for replacement?
So the, here.
Yeah.
Um. I don't, so I think the the inspection report on that was actually pretty good, which is amazing.
That is absolutely amazing.
They look at it because it's actually, you know, a uh. The deck was actually in pretty good shape.
Oh, hey.
So that's uh, nope, that's really all I've got.
So we have orders here that need to be sorted.
Yes.
We need to start one app to set the date for the next meeting is April second.
And our town be, the annual meeting is the twenty sixth, I think I wrote.
March twenty sixth. And the town meeting is at seven P M?
Yeah, I haven't signed any.
We don't.
Need to talk about this.
Yes, sorry. Um, just more of an F Y I for you here. Yeah, this note, which is the house that fifteen Commonwealth have, um, there has been some questions on, um. Well, it's looking like since the eighties, it has been built after a fire, it was billed as a, at the rate of a one to three bedroom with no record showing exactly. What um the original owner had paid for an allocation. I am going to resource this with planning and zoning.
You need to.
I'll get you the allocations and we'll set our next meeting lap it on. So, easy peasy.
Possible executive session?
No, sir.
What do you think, Mr. Chairman? Sorry, punt this football out here or what?
Signing warrant owners, we need an executive session.
No, sir.
Motion to uh.
I'll, I'll move, I'll make that motion.
I'll second whatever your motion is.
To adjourn.
Usually you're first, right?
That's right.